This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 7th, 2016, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 7th, 2016, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. And assistive listening devices are available. Mr. Gross, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge my pardon.
Could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Bremmertler.
Here.
Councilman Erickson.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Walsh.
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
This past week, we lost a longtime Highland Park resident, Mr. Frank Ref. Mr. Ref was first hired in Highland Park in 1961. He was a detective lieutenant in the police department and retired in 1986. He was on council from 1988 to 2001, and council president from 1990 to 1996 and 2000. I'd like to recognize him and take a moment of silence to think about all his contributions to our community. All right. Now, normally, when we have a council meeting at this point, we would go into council reports, but I see quite a few people here who I'm sure would like to speak with us. So I'm going to go into my mayor's report now, after which I'm going to open the floor for public discussion, and then go into our council reports. Last month, we experienced a terrible tragedy for the family of Little Chaim Kraus and for the entire community. We cannot underscore enough how this tragedy has so profoundly affected all of Highland Park. As any parent knows, the worst fear we have is that out of nowhere, something like this could happen. This was a devastating, horrible, and senseless tragedy, from which it will take many years for us to recover. As everyone knows, this incident is under investigation by the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and the Highland Park Police Department. They are taking this very seriously, and they will not let any of this drop. I asked the prosecutor's office for their latest report, and here's where the investigation stands today, according to Chief Jerry McElire of the county's office. And I'm quoting him here. "Unlike the state of New York, New Jersey law, in order to protect the victim and the defendant, limits the amount of information that a prosecutor's office can make public prior to presentation in court. What he was told was that the driver has been charged with serious offenses of aggravated assault and one count of death by auto. Sadly, as we know, the victims were struck while walking on the sidewalk." From the borough's end, while it might not be consolation to the family, understandably, here are the steps that we've taken thus far. Number one, I immediately reached out to Acting Governor Guardano's office, and she assigned her deputy chief of staff to work with me and the DOT to address safety issues on Highland Park's northern Raritan Avenue. I've provided them with a list of immediate actions we would like to see, along with the longer-term proposal. Two, we've obtained permission and installed our first no-left-turn sign out of one of the busy strip centers along northern Raritan. It was put up outside of Glock 27, and we're hoping to get the DOT to allow us to put more of those up. I will be meeting with the commissioner of the DOT, some of our legislators, our police captain, and others in February to address each of the safety items that we are requesting. I also reached out to Mayor Lanky of Edison, because many of Edison's residents walk on the sidewalk between Highland Park and Edison on Route 27. We will be taking even more steps to ensure the safety of all our residents. Our streetscapes are constantly changing and evolving, and the needs for our safety on these streets as they change, and the needs of our pedestrians, have to be addressed on a regular basis. We are continually reviewing what those needs are, and we are continuously looking at updates and improvements. Unfortunately, some of these things take time. As these updates become addressed, we will be open with all of our community about our findings, and as receptive as possible to your needs and concerns. The awful reality of our lives is that we cannot undo this terrible tragedy that took Little Chaim from his family and terribly injured his mother. Nothing that we can say or do here will ever amount to the kind of comfort that his family so deserves. However, if there are lessons to be learned from this tragedy to enable our community to live a safer life and to have more confidence in the safety of their environment, we will explore them. And indeed, if there are lessons that other municipalities and planners can take from this tragedy, it may enable future tragedies to be avoided. I'm going to open the floor now to public discussion. If anybody would like to go up and speak, please speak into the microphone. Tell us your name and your address. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Hello? It's working?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Ben Schiffman. I live in Highland Park. I'm here as a Highland Park resident. I'm here as a parent. I'm here as a member of the community and as just an individual person as well. I'm also an attorney licensed to practice in the state of New Jersey. I'd like to just first thank Mrs. Mayor and the entire council for all the steps you just laid out. They're all appreciated by the community. In addition to our appreciation, I wanted to express for the police department and for the prosecutor's office for everything that they've done, and I know will continue to do, in order to try to address these issues that you identified. And we all, again, I just want you to understand, we really truly appreciate it. I did want to offer some thoughts that I had, and I know some other people had as well, in trying to address some of these issues. Particularly, I think we're in a good, myself and some others here, in a good position to identify some of the issues, because there isn't a day that goes by, for me and for others as well, where we either aren't walking the corridor in question or driving down that corridor in question every single day. It's one or the other, sometimes both. And there's a lot of talk about what can be done, and I wanted just to put some points on the table, because I think thinking about it in a broad sense is more important than just reacting right away and doing something and then moving on. And I'm glad to hear what was laid out, because I think those are all great steps in the right direction. You know, perusing the town's website, I know the mayor takes some walks around town. We invite you to come walk the corridor with us, because until you see what's actually going on there, it's really difficult to put it in words. And if you would come, then we'd all join you, most of us hopefully. Here's what you would see. The stretch, it's called Upper Raritan, I believe, and you know, that goes from approximately North Sixth or North Eighth to the Edison border along Route 27.
Right.
To my knowledge, that is the only stretch of road in the township of Highland Park that's four lanes of traffic, two in each direction, at a rate of speed of 40 miles per hour. The other parts of Highland Park, to my knowledge, I believe, are 20, 25, maybe 30 in some instances.
So I also thought it was 25 in downtown, but it's not. It's 30 on Raritan Avenue and 25 on the county road, which is Woodbridge Avenue.
Okay, 25, and Cedar Lane, I believe.
Is 25.
Is 25.
Both of those are county. Is Cedar a county road?
Yes.
Okay. So both of those.
And Du Close, which I believe is Edison, at least on one side, or maybe both sides, that's also 25, to my knowledge. And my point is, this Upper Raritan area is a triangle.
Right.
We all refer to it as the triangle. The only part of the triangle that is 40 is this strip that we're talking about of Upper Raritan on Route 27. So I think the mayor mentioned that one of the immediate requests was to lower the speed limit.
Correct.
And we welcome and appreciate that. So that's the first thing you would notice. It's hard to miss cars speeding by when a speed limit's 40. People are, you know, no one's going to admit it, but people are going faster than 40. I'd be happy if they were only going 50, but they're going faster. Upon information and belief. The other thing you would notice, particularly now focusing on the strip where this incident occurred, between Columbia and where the traffic light is on, I believe it's 10th or 11th. There are sections of that strip, particularly where we walk to our congregation, which is between Lexington and Washington, where on either side, there is absolutely no sidewalk. Why is that? And we were here, I believe it was June of 2014, and some people put this on the record. There's just, there's strips on that section of 27 where the road, the sidewalk just deteriorated. It's either dirt, rubble, there's like utility pipes sticking up. So walking there is extremely dangerous on a good day. So then the question is, okay, if we crossed and went to the other side, how's the sidewalk there?
Let me stop you a second. The side that you're saying is dirt or no sidewalks, is that if you're on 27, is it heading north or south?
Is north towards Edison?
Yes.
So it's heading north, so it would be the east side.
Okay.
It's the side across the street from the Aguda, which is our congregation.
Right. Okay.
And that's the strip between Columbia, the street of that Columbia is on, so whatever. It's between Columbia and Rolfe or Barnard. I have a map, I can refer to it if necessary. But if you cross the street right there and go to the west side of 27, there's essentially a strip mall of restaurants, where there is no sidewalk, because that's active driveways, but not really driveways, just people are pulling up onto the curb to park on the curb right in front of the restaurants.
Right.
So there's no, just all else being equal, there's no effective way of walking there without either walking through moving cars, moving driveways, or walking on parts of the sidewalk that have crumbled and fallen apart.
Right. And Mr. Schiffman, my understanding is also that there are some of the commercial properties along that area did not even plow their sidewalks, if they had sidewalks, in a timely manner, so that people were forced to walk on the avenue as well as.
You're talking about during the recent snowstorm?
Yeah.
That could be. That could be. Yeah. It was, well, not only that, it was hard to even, if you were on a sidewalk, because the way the plows came down, you couldn't get into the intersection through the actual crosswalk. For example, and again, we're appreciative, I know there was a town police officer helping people cross the street on Saturday this week, which we appreciate and hope that could continue. Where that crosswalk is, I believe it's, I think it's right off of Washington.
Right.
You couldn't get to the crosswalk, because the snow was in plow effect. You know, the crosswalk just was nonexistent. Plus, walking to that crosswalk, which is the only way to cross the street, by a crosswalk in this entire strip, there's no, to my knowledge, there isn't even a sidewalk on the side street within the triangle leading up to that crosswalk. And if there is, it's minimal. So you have to walk in the street to begin with, just to get there. So my point in just bringing those facts out are that it's just very difficult to walk in a perfect, you know, all else being equal, without doing anything, there's just no way to walk safely, assuming that, you know, that the side, if we were assuming there's sidewalks, I just wanted to be out there, that the sidewalks are even not there or in a state of disrepair.
Right. And also, there are areas that do have sidewalks, but they're very narrow.
Very, well, and that gets me to the next point, which is the four lanes of moving traffic with no shoulder whatsoever. And when you get to the sidewalk, there's not even in many places a strip of grass. It's just literally, you know, if this is the road right here, you know, the sidewalk is right here. There's nothing in between. So, you know, one trip, you're in the road. Or conversely, a car swerves out of the way, unfortunately, it's on the sidewalk. There's absolutely no buffers on the town or the state. I don't know who it was recently put in a bike lane there. So now, that strip, that one of the four lanes in each direction, not only is it moving traffic, you also have potential for bicycle collisions, because now you have bicycles traversing the area as well. So there's a lot going on there. What do we do about it? So we bring in planners. I know you reached out to the state. They're going to come down DOT, it sounds like. That's great. Some things we thought of, which was, you know, when the town, when the original town plan was put in place, I'm sure that was many, many years ago, what they did for, you know, Main Street, Highland Park, 27 there, still 27, still a state road, it is one lane in each direction with parked cars on either side. Now, parked cars takes away one of the lanes, it provides the shoulder, it also addresses the issue of cars parking on the sidewalk. Now they'd be parking on actual parking spots. It could also be a revenue booster for the town if they chose to put in meters, but don't attribute that to me if they do end up putting in meters.
Did you hear that, Councilman George?
But you're talking about a large strip of land where there's a lot of commercial activity. Now, they just, I don't know who approved this, probably, again, probably the state. They opened a rental car agency on this exact strip I'm talking about. So now you have, not only can't you walk there because of all these active driveways, you have rental cars parking literally up to the curb on that strip. So.
And that's exactly what I mean when I say that the landscape of that part of town is constantly evolving. It's almost as if it's the new frontier.
Sure.
For Highland Park.
Well, and that's exactly my point, where it's, to me, it's an extension of the main part of Highland Park, so why not extend the main design of the roadway further, you know, at least to the border of Highland Park? Not only has the landscape of the traffic patterns and the stores on the side and the residences on the side changed, but within the triangle itself, and on the other side as well, the amount of people, I think, has increased seven, eight, nine, tenfold from, you know, when it may have been first looked at.
Right.
So the amount of people trying to cross the street. We mentioned there's the synagogue there, we're all crossing the street to go there. There's also a high school. There's also a preschool. There's also, when you go up a little further towards Edison, there's, I think, a Montessori preschool as well. So there's a lot of activity, both pedestrian and vehicle traffic going through this. And we, part of the reason we all love Highland Park is because it's pedestrian-friendly. And there's a lot of initiatives to make it more pedestrian-friendly. This is an area where we feel a lot more focus could be given. Crosswalks, there's only one, like I mentioned, and it's all the way, it's very close to where the light is. Literally, it's a block from where the light is, which begs the question, why aren't there any more crosswalks further up, you know, going north, particularly where a lot of people are looking to cross the street?
Yeah. I think, you know, we have some concerns about crosswalks in general, because unless the speed limit on 27 is addressed, having the crosswalks does not make me feel very safe right now. And so that is what, you know, we are looking at that as a possibility, but I don't know if our Public Safety Committee is really in love with that idea.
Sure. Well, and that's, I'm glad you said that, because we agree, like, bringing down the speed limit is paramount. And like that, if it's the state, you know, we rely on the borough to lobby the state to get that done, because all that, I mean, obviously, there's red tape and whatever needs to happen, but all it really is is hanging up a sign saying, you know, instead of 40 miles per hour, now it's 25, to even out the triangle. You know, it sounds good, it'll have an effect, an immediate effect, without spending a lot of money. And once that happens, all these other things could come to be. Now, there was talk, and some others will talk about this, I believe, about a traffic light. I know we were here, and we were talking about having the state getting involved to come down and do a study, or whatever it would entail, to install a traffic light within this strip of land. We want to continue pursuing that, but we want to pursue that in a way that makes sense. If you just, because my point is, if you just put in the traffic light, what's going to happen? Now, people are going to see a light blinking red, you know, from 60, 70 feet away. Are they going to slow down, or are they going to speed up?
Exactly.
We need to plan for those contingencies. And so these are just ideas that we throw out and want to be part of the process when things are being implemented. And, you know, a lot of the work was done already. You know, we went, and everyone's aware of it, the borough's master plan, that I also found on the website from 2003, which I'm sure everyone has a copy of, lays out specifically what these issues are, particularly for Upper Raritan, which is this strip of land, and talks about alternatives of how, from 2003, we could go about trying to make Upper Raritan more pedestrian-friendly, to bring it in line with the Highland Park image, message, whatever you want to brand it. Laying out suggestions very similar to what I just articulated. In fact, a lot of what I'm trying to put together into words here comes from the borough's master plan. So we appreciate that it takes time, and it's going to take effort, and it's going to take a lot of thought, and a lot of people involved on the state, county, and local level, but how much time is it really going to take when we had this from 2003, and a lot of these things could have been looked into, may have already been looked into, may have already considered some of these and dismissed them, but there's a lot here, and a lot of the legwork, it seems, from the planning perspective, may have already been done, and we could, you know, to the extent we could piggyback off of that, we would certainly like to do that.
So there are certainly some good suggestions there, but as I said, and as you mentioned, the landscape on Upper Raritan has changed so much, it's much more active than it was even back then.
Yeah.
So that's a jumping-off point, perhaps, but I would like to take a look at where we are now on Raritan, and what the activity levels are, and see what is the best thing for us to do, given the scenario in 2016 and possible changes in 2017, 2018, and that sort of thing.
Sure. Sure. And my only point in bringing it up is that the, and I agree, it's changed, it's gotten, I think, worse from a pedestrian perspective since 2003, but at a bare minimum, this was addressing it from the perspective that it's very difficult for pedestrians to traverse the roads here, and it's very dangerous for cars as well to be driving at this rate of speed. So the recommendations that they had in here, I think, apply seven, eight, ninefold, even more today, because of those circumstances that just got exacerbated for the reasons you laid out.
Yeah.
So I don't mean that this should be a blueprint, let's adopt this and move forward.
Right.
But the fact that they identified issues, those issues didn't disappear, they just increased over time. So those are just some thoughts we had. And again, I wanted to express our thanks. You know, as residents, we want to be involved, we want to continue to be involved in a way that could be productive. You mentioned that there are meetings with various entities, agencies, to the extent that involvement from the residents of the town could be helpful. You know, I'm happy to participate, I'm sure others are as well. We wanted to make sure that whatever's done is done in a way that's thought out, planned out, you know, accordingly, so that everyone can make, rest assured that we're doing, everyone's giving enough thought to this, that we're doing it in the best way possible.
And just so you know, I did ask the DOT Commissioner's Assistant to let me know if they would be open to having a resident in this group as well. So waiting to hear back from them on that.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight, and thank you again for everything that you and the town and the police and the prosecutor's office have been doing for us.
Thank you. And Mr. Schiffman, if you want to contact me, let me know when you're ready to go for that walk.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to go, and maybe the chief or the captain from our police department will be able to join me.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Ikorn. I live on 138 Amherst Street, it's a triangle section. I stood here about a year and a half ago, discussing the very same issue that we're talking about tonight. Talked about at that time, snow, being able to cross over. I live on Amherst Street. If you're not familiar, the portion of Amherst Street right before Raritan Avenue, there's no sidewalk at all. There is grass on both sides.
On Amherst?
On Amherst Street, there is grass for a good, at least a quarter, I don't know if it's a third, maybe even a third of the block, which means the only option that I have to walk down Amherst Street is to walk in the street and have to get onto a curb on Raritan Avenue, assuming that there's no cars turning, making their right or left turn onto Amherst Street. If I take my kids, it's always a problem. With the snow, it's even worse, because I don't even have a place to get on, because the snow covers the curbs, which means I have to walk on Amherst Street itself. There's so much snow that accumulates on Raritan that, you know, the past snowstorm, it was coming up to my waist, and I had to walk on 27, hoping that there were no cars in the lane and a half that was available. So we all know there are safety issues.
Right.
There are times when I feel that, you know, the town focuses so much on the quarter of an inch cracks in sidewalks, and while, you know, pedestrian safety, we're all about that, the town is lauded for that, but, you know, there are serious, serious issues with safety, whether it's 27, no sidewalk, and I think we have to spend some of the time and the budget on that as well. I want to read the meeting minutes from June 10, 2014, when Idril Kraus, the father of Chaim Kraus, he actually was here and he spoke. And the meeting minutes from that, from that meeting, Idril Kraus, Central Avenue, had two issues relating to the sidewalk program. The particular area he is concerned about is Columbia and Rolfe, where the sidewalks are crumbling. The intersection of Columbia and Route 27 has had an increase in traffic patterns. There are 10 to 12 businesses in the area, and there's a lot of traffic. There is a need for an additional traffic light, and he wants to have a study done. Acting Mayor Millet stated that that is a state highway, and it would have to go through the New Jersey Department of Traffic. Now, unfortunately, it's, you know, almost prophetic, his words and the tragedy that happened to his own son just a couple of weeks ago. Since that meeting in June, I had been in touch with Councilwoman Foster-Dublin. We coordinated a little bit to try and, you know, kind of instead of having everybody emailing all at the same time, and, you know, you were gracious enough to follow up with me, and you had let me know, and I'll just read the email that we had. This was on September 22, 2014. "Letting me know I'm following up on the request for traffic study and potential traffic light on Raritan Avenue, 27, between South 11th Avenue and Columbia Street. The preliminary traffic study was completed by our police department and sent to Mr. Joseph Bertoni, Acting Commissioner, New Jersey Department of Transportation on Friday, September 19, 2014. We will advise you of their decision as soon as they respond to the study." So that was, you know, close to a year and a half ago. We haven't heard any update since then. I know a lot of us have been wondering, you know, we know that it takes a long time. Had there been any follow-ups, actions, anything that's been taken, put, we haven't heard anything about that.
So I don't, you know, I don't know what happened and why there wasn't a reach out to you at that point, but I know that it was discussed in the Public Safety Committee, and they are looking, they were looking at different options, and unfortunately, it did not get addressed in a more timely manner. But that's all I know.
I know. We can't change the past.
Correct.
So, you know, what I think bothered a lot of people is the fact that maybe this could have done quicker than it already had, than, you know, it hasn't, actually. I have a letter here from the Department of Traffic in the state of New Jersey. I'm not going to say who it was addressed to, I don't want to call anybody out here in public, but I want to read the letter. Deputy Commissioner Joseph Bertoni, this was, again, this was sent to the town on November 21, 2014. Deputy Commissioner Joseph Bertoni had asked me to respond to your letter requesting the installation of a traffic signal on Route 27 between South 11th Avenue and Columbia Street. I appreciate the opportunity to help." I appreciate the opportunity to address your concerns. As you may be aware, there are certain municipal requirements associated with various projects undertaken by the New Jersey Department of Traffic, such as, such as sharing in costs or providing resolutions to enable new traffic regulations to be established and enforced. With respect to your request, under New Jersey Department of Traffic Policy 346, the Borough must commit to pay 25% of the cost associated with operationally-based electrical construction projects. Upon receipt of this cost share and commitment, our traffic engineering representative will be happy to initiate an investigation. I hope this information is helpful. If you have any additional questions, please feel free to contact Denise Peck, Office of Community Constituent Relations. Sincerely, John M. Kate, Acting Assistant Commissioner, Government and Community Relations. Which means that we had the opportunity. And their response, the, when following up with them to find out if anything had come out from that almost a year and a half ago, the traffic study was received, and this is an email from a couple of days ago, from Joseph Bertoni. The traffic study was received and the New Jersey Department of Traffic did respond to the town, see attached, requesting the standard 25% contribution resolutions of support, which have been, which would have initiated the process. However, New Jersey Department of Traffic never heard back from the town. Now, I'm not here to point fingers, but we had a responsibility as representatives for this town, we had an opportunity here to act on this. Would it have changed anything? I can't tell you.
Right.
But could there have been a good chance that maybe the tragedy could have been prevented? Absolutely. And I think we're looking for a commitment at the community to make sure that this doesn't get delayed again and this happens, you know, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mina Kamen and I am a very satisfied resident of Highland Park. I live at 111 Washington Avenue and I am lucky enough to be able to work down the block at 1131 Raritan Avenue. I work in the adjacent building to the temple, at the school building, which is the preschool and the high school on the second floor. I want to take a few minutes just to describe to you, maybe you've seen it, maybe you haven't, and on your walk through the town with Mr. Schiffman, I suggest that you go during the hours of possibly between eight o'clock and nine o'clock, where there are over a hundred children that are getting to that spot. Many of them come in cars, many of them come in buses, but many of them are walked by their mothers or their caretakers and there are strollers being pushed, there are multiple children who are coming with only one adult. And I think at this point, when we look out the window and we see the number of children walking on the street, we all give a little shiver. The teachers right now are afraid to take their children out on a walk because they're just afraid of cars coming up onto the sidewalks. Between the hours of eight o'clock and nine o'clock, I'm just gonna repeat, again, there are over a hundred children coming to that point. And then again, at 11:30, when the high school girls have a break till about a quarter to one, they are, many of them are walking or were walking, I think now they're a little scared. They are walking on Raritan Avenue, they choose to go either to Quick Check for a drink, or they're making a left and go, walking to Glock 27 for snacks or food. And at this point, I think that has sort of stopped. We would all love to see it continue, but they don't feel safe. And then again, between the hours of one o'clock and for the preschool, it's till about four o'clock, there are different dismissal times and so there are parents coming once again, either by car, or many babysitters, or caretakers, or parents, walking with younger siblings to pick up the preschool children. So, there is a lot of traffic around Raritan Avenue, coming up onto Washington, coming up onto Lexington, and specifically crossing over from the triangle area, from that side of Raritan onto the side where the school is located. So, the amount of children that need to cross that section is many. And then again, at five o'clock, when the high school is dismissed, again, the girls walking on Raritan, either making a right, making a left, and specifically crossing over Raritan are many.
I, I think it's extremely important that when we have the meeting with the Department of Transportation and we make our pitch for reducing the speed limit, that they are aware that this is not just a shul, a synagogue, it is also a school.
Correct. Correct. Thank you.
My name is Josh Przansky. I live at 141 North 10th Avenue here in Highland Park. Before I begin, I want to thank you, Mayor, for all of your help and support since this incident happened, from the second the Sabbath was over, the day of the incident, when I called you right after I came home from synagogue, until today, you have been responsive, you have been proactive and, and you have counseled, you're gonna be my counselor, I should say, I hope you don't charge me for that, for, for, about this incident. So, I appreciate everything you've done and your concern about this and hopefully this will move things forward. When the people came here, the, the group, many of them are here today, in June of 2010, it was following a request they made of me, because of my, my interaction, advocacy in Trenton, to see what they could do to get a light at the corner of 27 and Columbia. We met prior to coming here with Senator Peter Barnes, since he's our state senator, to ask him if, you know, because we didn't know how the process worked, if he would begin the process on the state level with the Department of Transportation to get the light in. He advised us at that meeting that the process begins here, at the Borough, and speak to you first and do what has to be done, it's like a six or seven or eight step process. They came down here in good faith, these are community members that unfortunately have not been politically active, or as much as I would like them to have been over the years, on the state level, let alone the local level, and yet, they were uncomfortable with coming here and speaking in front of the council, simply because they've never had that interaction. They came down here, they opened themselves up, they really gave some good pointers, and they thought it was a great meeting and that things would follow up, things would happen and be followed up over the, in certain, you know, the following months. As Mr. Ikorn said, there was an exchange of emails and there was a thought that things were moving in the right direction, and only after the accident did we find out they weren't. That's something that, that they did no wrong, they did exactly what they had to do as community residents, as taxpayers, asking that their pedestrian safety be enhanced on the most dangerous highway. The state, the state responded and said they would investigate, and perhaps they wouldn't have said a traffic light is sufficient or is necessary or is allowable in that, on that street. Perhaps they would have come up with some other ideas. Perhaps had they, the communication continued with the state and, and this would have moved on, the state would have said, you know what, maybe let's put no left-hand certainties signs out of all of the restaurants and parking lots along 27. Maybe the state would have said that crosswalk is not sufficient on Marlowe Borough and Washington, perhaps we need to do something else. Perhaps the state would have said, let's reduce the size of that highway from four lanes to two lanes or three lanes like they have up in Edison between, I believe, Talmage and Borough Hall and, and City Hall in Edison, where you have a turning lane in the middle and maybe have one lane on both sides and a turning lane in the middle. Perhaps other ideas would have come forth that could have prevented this accident from happening, which has destroyed a family, which has left a family bereft of their son, their only son, and, and a mother recovering now, which could be months of recovery. But that's all water under the bridge, it has happened. But now, this community needs a commitment from this council that it will no longer push aside this issue. This issue has to be issue number one, not fracking, not nuclear bombs in Highland Park, or any other idea that comes up at this council, which really doesn't relate to what your responsibility is, which is to the residents of this town that you represent. They voted for you to be their representatives and they need you to represent them. The people here have to feel safe walking in the streets and having their children walk in the streets. I don't live in the triangle, I live on the north side, but my daughter is very close friends with the sister of Chaim Kraus and other children in that area, and she's scared to walk across the street on the Sabbath to go visit her friends. She was very happy this week that there was a crossing guard, but again, that was something that the synagogue had to bear the expense to pay for. I would like to see the township, until this is resolved, make sure there is a crossing guard there every week. I understand there's fiscal constraints, but this goes beyond money. This goes to safety and the protection of the citizens of this town. The children need to feel safe when they walk to school across the street. The parents need to feel safe standing on a corner, holding their child's hand, waiting to cross the street. The people have to feel safe when they leave the synagogue on the Sabbath and go to people's houses to have, after synagogue, what we call a kiddish and a little party, going across the street. I walk from the synagogue to Glock 27, like Ben Schiffman said, there are cars coming and going to, from the rent-a-car center, from Al Meshi down to Glock 27 and the restaurants over there. It's dangerous. It needs to be fixed and it needs to be fixed now and we need to know that this is priority number one of the Borough of Highland Park, to make sure this never, ever happens again. The rest of the town, thank God, doesn't have this issue. We have a downtown with a light at every corner, we have a downtown with two lanes of traffic. We have an area that goes from, I would say, Columbia or the block after Columbia, down to, to North 6, that is a wild zone. People on Eighth, North 8th have complained that they can't even make a turn, they can't see cars because it's a turn. The town has grown, it's not as small as it used to be, it's not as easy to drive here as it used to be, it's not as easy to walk here as it used to be. We're talking about non-shoveling or three, not shoveling sidewalks this week. When I was walking on Saturday to see if the crossing guard was there and to talk to them, just to prep them as to what's going on, I almost slipped on the ice. He says, you gotta be careful here. I say, yeah. I says, this is a sidewalk. Did they get a ticket for not shoveling their sidewalk? We have a sidewalk ordinance here. How could stores, and, and that, that was a building on 27 not shovel their sidewalk? When you talk about, Ben Schiffman was talking about lack of buffer zones, I saw three accidents over the course, I'm living here 17 years, where one car went through the synagogue, our old synagogue building, into the, into the room over there that was used for kiddish room or used for the kids to play from the preschool in the old building, a car went through the wall as the custodian was waxing the floor. My daughter was playing in that room 30 minutes before. I just saw a few, a few months ago, it was a year ago, a car went into the new synagogue, but it missed because you have a stretch of, a patch of grass there, so it didn't hit the building itself, but it went off at 27. I saw a few years ago, walking home at, after Friday night service at the taxi cab in that building that didn't shovel the sidewalk, in the building, in the brick, you can still see the chipped bricks on the side of that building. There is no buffer zone there, it's a wild, wild street, there have been accidents over the years, it needs to stop. It needs to stop and people have to feel safe walking home after dark. I just want to say again, thank you for what you've done and, and I ask you to please, this time, don't push it off. Work with the state, see what you could do to make our town a safe spot for these people who live in that area, for us who pray at that synagogue. And it's not only that synagogue, there's a synagogue in Edison, Havas Israel, that people walk as well, cross the streets, some go left, some go right. We need to make sure that moving forward, this is going to be safe. I look forward to working with you on this project, anything you need from me, you know where to reach me. We've reached each other many times before and, and I look forward to see this, this issue be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
So, um, this, working, does it even matter?
It's working.
Okay.
It's far from you though, you're taller than you.
Okay. All right, so, I'm sorry, I'm David Feiler, I'm 1603 Central. So, excuse my notes on the BlackBerry here as I was typing as, as we went. Look, first of all, this is gonna be horrible to say, right? You know, they always say, with respect to traffic lights, things like this, you know, somebody has to die for something to change, right? It's horrible that it happened, let's, again, I'm gonna reiterate what people have said, right? Let's not miss the opportunity. It happened, now, at least, let's get something done. So, you know, we do need to see continued movement on it, right? Not just a meeting and then we sort of forget. And I would actually ask that this remain on the agenda, every meeting you guys have, until this is resolved, you know, so just, so it's forefront, right? This really should be an item, we talk about the updates every single time.
I, I'm going to go one step further in that and each council member has a council committee and has objectives, key objectives and goals for 2016 and because this tragedy happened after the original goals were set, I'm, I'm going to add the safety of Upper Raritan to the Public Safety Committee's main goals for this coming year.
Thank you. Okay, so, you know, there's been some talk about, you know, kind of comparing Upper Raritan to the rest of Highland Park and I know you've mentioned that it's a changing landscape and there are, you know, different things, and I understand that, but if we really look at the businesses there, I understand there's a lot of sort of pull-in, pull-out business, at the end of the day, I don't know, is it really, is there really more commerce there than there is, you know, further down? The reason I'm saying that is, the, the real reason for the traffic, I don't think is that there's an inordinate amount of businesses there, it's a wider road. So, I know there's been some suggestions here about narrowing the road, but at the end of the day, right, you've got the road cutting through Highland Park, it's one lane each way, it becomes two lanes, I'm sure someone did a study at some point, figured that it was necessary, but cars are going faster because it's wider.
Correct.
Right? So, if it were narrower, it wouldn't necessarily be as fast. And, and the funny thing is, if you look at now, people have talked about the snow clearing. Over the last, let's say, week or so, right, right after the big snowstorm, most of that rightmost lane was actually taken up by snow. So, you actually had a highway that was one lane in each way and you know what, there were no big backups. It worked. So, you know, to the extent that it's possible to narrow it, it does work, even with it being narrow.
Well, that's a good point to raise to the DOT when we meet with them.
Yeah, in practice, right? There was a nice test narrowing of the road already. Look, the end of the day, it's a highway. We refer to it in my house as a highway. It is, it's, it's a highway and they're not doing, as, as we said, they're not doing 40, they're doing 50, they're doing 50 plus. It's a highway. And you got a sidewalk, and I know you know this, but you know, again, you take that walk, you really see it, because we've walked along that road, there's a sidewalk, it's a little curb, and then there are 55 mile an hour cars coming by, you don't want a trip. I mean, I've crossed some of the side streets with my kids, walking home along that street, which, don't think I'm ever gonna walk along that street again, and I get nervous because you hear a car coming, that's perfectly in their own lane, they're not swerving off, but all it takes is like one split second, as we know, right? You know, to the point that I'm asking them to kind of walk further into the sidewalk, so it's kind of that, you know, that scary. And there's no barrier. And I think it was suggested earlier about, you know, if you narrow it, maybe put parked cars there. I've actually seen things like this, they do this in Manhattan as well too, right? You know, having the parked cars provides a barrier to the traffic. So, if it's, the biggest issue, right, is you've got a 50 mile an hour road and you've got pedestrians and they're right next to each other. That can't be. So, either you slow them down or you put a barrier there. Now, there's some better ideas, I think, that came up today, but one thing I was thinking of coming in here, and it would be an eyesore, but it would be safer, is at the very least, a traffic barrier. Those metal traffic barriers, I don't know how much they support, if a car is coming at it at 50 miles an hour, frankly, I don't know if that's enough. I don't know. I don't know. But right now, there's nothing, right? So, right now, literally, you're like right next to that traffic with nothing to prevent it, at the very least, something to slow down the cars that are gonna jump the curb, because it's gonna happen again, hopefully, without a person there. Okay. And I know there's been some talk about the traffic light. I know the traffic light was in issue a while ago, we're talking about the traffic light tonight. There may or may not need, be a need for a traffic light. I remember the last time we were talking about the traffic light, you know, I wasn't necessarily 100% convinced. As we know, they weren't actually crossing. So, had there been a traffic light, and I'm not saying there doesn't need to be one, but I'm saying I don't think it fixes this problem, had there been a traffic light and the light was green, this still would have happened. The issue is that even if you're doing everything you're supposed to do and you don't step off that curb unless you absolutely can, and you're on a crosswalk and everything else, you have to stand on the sidewalk and wait for your opportunity to cross, and that's where there's no protection. And there's gotta be protection. Again, that's why I come back to the barrier or something, at the very least, if you're gonna stand and cross, there needs to be something to keep you safe.
Yeah, when you mentioned the barrier, what comes to mind is a long river, river road where Johnson Park is. The county actually has a metal barrier in parts of that, don't they? Yeah.
Well, one thing that they did right there, but we don't have the space to do, is when you cross, you're immediately, you immediately go all the way deep into the park, right?
It's plenty of space, yeah.
So, yeah, there's more space there, I suppose, but, um, what else, what else, what else? Yeah, so I guess the last thing that I just want to say, again, I know you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You know, I know you mentioned that it's a changing landscape.
Yeah.
And it's kind of the frontier and, and I agree that if we've got a plan for the town, that needs to move north, but more importantly, it's a changing landscape, but we need to be in control of it, right? It can't just be changing on its own, we need to decide how it's gonna change.
And they need to bring, be brought up to speed on the safety issues that we've been talking about and I plan on doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Josh Przyanski, again. One thing I forgot to say before in that is I want to thank Chief Frisco and Captain Golden for all of their help and working together with us and also being very responsive. Thank you very much, chief.
My name is Rabbi Ruven Drucker. I'm the Rabbi of Gudath Israel of Edison Highland Park, a citizen here in Highland Park for the last 22 years and a very delighted and happy citizen, I may add. I would like to also echo our community's appreciation for our police department. I had the regrettable obligation to officiate at Chaim Kraus's funeral that took place in our synagogue. And the police department before and for many weeks, or a couple of weeks after, have been very responsive, as they always have been, and we certainly appreciate that. I would just like to bring our board's attention to Flint, Michigan. Flint, Michigan, as it's at least portrayed in the press, whether it's true or not, I can't tell you, but there's certainly a perception out there that the city had unwittingly delivered poisoned water to the citizens of Flint, Michigan. When it was discovered, maybe they didn't act fast enough. And there were a number of children who suffered because of lead poisoning, and now they have to be concerned about reparations in terms of helping those children through their adulthood. There's one thing that Flint, Michigan did. They handed out bottled water. And we're here tonight, after all the suggestions, you're a very intelligent group of people, very responsible group of people, nobody has any doubts about that. But we need bottled water from you. And we're asking you to tell us when we're getting the bottled, bottled water on a day by day basis. And what I would like to suggest is that there'd be somebody responsible from the Borough of Highland Park that will communicate on at least a two or three day a week basis with a couple of our community activists to keep them apprised, and this is your bottled water, in terms of how we're going to, and how fast we're going to address all the problems that you're aware of since 2003, to make sure that it actually comes to reality. We deserve that communication. What we don't want to do is come back next week, next month, five years from now, and regu emails about things that should have taken place that didn't take place. That will not happen if you will take the responsibility of setting up an ombudsman that will communicate with our community and let us know about what's happening in this northern corridor. And so I respectfully ask that before tonight's meeting is concluded, that you resolve to set up that ombudsman and we will, and with our community, set up individuals that you can communicate to, not on an ad hoc basis, but on a basis, that's a reasonable basis, on an ongoing manner, so that we know and we can figure out whether or not this is taking, being taken care of. Nobody wants to be in the dark anymore. And so we humbly ask, please give us the bottled water. We need to know how all of these things will be implemented and what the timetable is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rabbi Drucker. I do want to iterate my opening remarks when I said that we would be open with the community on all of the advances. Also want to iterate when I said that I asked the DOT to allow us to have a member of the community involved in this meeting and ongoing meetings, that, that I hope that the person that is selected by the community to join in those committees can be the person that, that I would communicate with on a regular basis.
Okay, but I, I appreciate that, but that's not sufficient. What I'm asking for is that the Borough of Highland Park hand out bottled water. We have a calamity with this northern corridor. And so we need to know on an ongoing basis, not that someone's going to attend some meeting with, with DOT at some place down the line, but that there be ongoing communication at least a couple of times a week to make sure that this thing is being ferried along so that everybody's in the loop and that nobody drops the ball.
I'm sorry, perhaps you didn't hear the last part of what I said, and that was that I would be the person that would be communicating with whoever the person is that your community decides to have join us in this.
That's terrific. And that could be on a weekly basis?
And you can ask Josh Przyanski how often we speak.
Well, see, that, that's de jour. I, I, I mean, I, I'd like it to be, as I said, that's ad hoc, I'd like it to be a de jour. I'd like there to be some type of mechanism formally set up that it doesn't require a phone call to Borough Hall, but Borough Hall should call our representative.
And I hear you. I do want to just mention that I, I've been mayor now for about a year and my method of operation is probably too hands-on. And I say that because I take everything that happens in this town very seriously. I'm a mother too. And whatever happens in this community, I feel personally affected by in many ways. So you have my word, Rabbi, that if I say that I'm going to be in contact with a person from your community and keeping this person updated in what's happening and involved in inputting to us what is happening from the community's perspective, you have to believe me.
I absolutely do and that's certainly good enough for me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our Hope Grove's Adley Gardens. Madam Mayor, for the benefit of all our new members here that I haven't seen previously, I'd like to just bring up a couple of words that all the people attending tonight know exactly what I'm, what I'm talking about. Since last October, there's a situation over on First Avenue where the sidewalks, 12 blocks are uprooted and shrubbery all over the place. Each month, I have tried to find out who is responsible and who is going to fix this affair. Many of you people attending tonight probably are well aware of what I'm talking about. Last month, Mayor, I asked you who is going to be responsible to fix the sidewalks over on First Avenue. There are 12 blocks plus all that shrubbery since last October. Okay, now, with the weather, I can understand that. Last month, I asked you to tell me who you gave the citation to. You could not give me an answer. No member of the council could give me an answer, including your attorney. Now, now, you're trying to tell me that there's been a letter. I'm not interested in any letter.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross?
Just a moment, I have the floor.
No, Mr. Gross.
Just a moment, I have the floor.
No.
I have the floor. You wait till I get done.
No, Mr. Gross, I'm sorry, but we, I do control the floor here and I just, I will let you talk, I will let you continue to talk, but I do want to set the record straight here. You did come several months ago to talk about an area of First Avenue next to Unity Bank on First Avenue. The reason why, when you asked last week, last meeting, why we could not tell you who it was, was because Mr. Brescher, who had been here at the prior meeting to talk with you, was not here. We do not hand out the citations ourselves.
You, you, uh, excuse me. You said to, you said to everyone here, including the TV cameras, that...
Mr. Gross, please don't make me ask you to sit down, okay?
No, no, I will not sit down.
Mr. Gross?
I happen to be a parliamentarian. I have the floor. You're, you're interrupting me and you're violating the federal law.
Mr. Gross, I want to get Mr. Brescher, who has all the information that he had ready for you last time, ready to talk with you about it. I understand he also called you during the week and...
I want to know who the citation was issued to.
Okay, okay, that's a good question. Mr. Brescher, would you like to address the issue of the First Avenue sidewalks?
Sure. There was no citation that was sent out. A notice to repair was sent out, giving them 30 days to remedy any problems that were over there.
You may want to speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Are you hearing? No, that one's gone. There was no violation sent out, a letter was sent out, they had 30 days to repair any deficiencies on the sidewalks. Okay, when I went out there, the level, the sidewalks that were raised were ground down, okay?
No, no, we're not. I, I beg your pardon.
Excuse me, I have photos right here showing that they're ground down.
Now, I just walked there this morning and the sidewalks are still uprooted. The, your shrubbery is all over the place.
All right, I'm not discussing shrubbery right now, I'm talking...
All right, let's talk about the sidewalk.
I have pictures of all the slabs that are over there, okay? Showing on certain ones that had a greater than a half inch rise were ground down, okay? I went and I measured every slab there. There are no slabs that are greater than one half inch. They're all under a half of an inch.
I, I asked you over the phone that I would come down there with you and show you.
That's correct. And then when I asked you...
But you said, no.
No, excuse me.
Mr. Gross, let, let Mr. Brescher speak to answer you, please.
That is right. I was, I was, you were told that I would call you between 11 and 12 and I did? When I said when you want to set up a meeting where I can meet with you, your exact words were, "I don't have time for this," were your exact words.
Since October, I have been trying to get the, to get the party responsible. Your mayor, this mayor, has said that a citation was issued and I, I have been trying to find out who the citation was issued to.
Okay, a letter to the property owner was sent out. There was no citation sent out, okay? They were given 30 days to remedy any raised flags of sidewalk, which they did. And the pictures are right here, showing where it's ground. I don't know where you're telling me they weren't ground.
So, so, Mr. Gross?
The sidewalk, there's 12 blocks that are uprooted.
Excuse me, Scott, get on my way. Thank you. Mr. Gross, Mr. Brescher has been trying to work this out with you. If you would like to meet with him out in the hallway to discuss this further, you can.
No, I, I want to, I want this whole audience to know exactly what's going on.
Okay, so, Mr. Gross, we did have Mr. Brescher go out and look at the sidewalk that you were complaining about. He was trying just now to tell you and show you what the situation is. So if you want to listen to him explain it, then he can explain it to you again, but you have to let him talk so you can hear what he's saying.
What I am saying, Mayor, that there are 12 blocks that are uprooted plus all that shrubbery all over the place.
Okay, so the last time you spoke, you asked about one particular piece of property on First Avenue near the Unity Bank.
That's right, and there's 12 blocks right there that are uprooted.
Okay, so, so what Mr. Brescher can do next, later this week or next week, is go out and check the remainder of those blocks, but I'd like you to go with him. Did you check all the first...
I have a picture, I have a picture of every square there.
I offered to go to...
Oh, 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 wait, when you say block...
When I spoke with him, I offered to go out there and he said, "No."
That is incorrect, sir.
Mr. Gross, when you say, when you say block, you're not talking about blocks, you're talking about a piece of cement.
Blocks of sidewalks, Mayor.
Okay.
There's 12 blocks.
Okay, so he has all of that for you with photographs and I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss it with you.
I'm still trying to find out who is responsible for the upkeep...
Who is the property owner that received the letter?
No, we're not talking about a letter. We're talking about...
It was a letter, it was a...
You were the one that said that a citation was issued.
No, Mr. Gross...
And I'm trying to find out who the citation was issued to.
What happened was that a letter of warning was sent out to the, to the property owner.
He fixed one block.
He was cited about this sidewalk. So I think what you're asking is who is the property owner? Is that your question? Is your question who is the property owner that was cited? Mr. Gross?
That still does not answer what I'm saying, Mayor. I want to know who is going to be responsible?
Okay.
Is it the Borough?
No. Miss, Mr. Brescher...
The Borough, you people, the, the whole council, including your attorney, have no right suing the, the residents of Highland Park over the sidewalk.
It usually goes the other way, but that's okay.
This section of the sidewalk falls within the ordinance, it is under half an inch.
Okay.
Anything that was higher was uprooted and there was a section that was supposed to be replaced.
Okay. So, so the, anything that is left is less than a half of an inch, which is not deemed to be required to be fixed, correct?
It's left, yes.
The things, the pieces that were more than a half of an inch had to be repaired and they...
Well, who is going to repair? Is it the Borough of Highland Park? You people have acknowledged, right here at the meeting, that Highland Park is responsible for the sidewalks. Now, if Highland Park is responsible for the sidewalk, you have acknowledged that to me right here. If Highland Park, the Borough, is responsible for the sidewalk, then you people are responsible for the upkeep also.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
I don't know what you're thanking me for.
Ruth Picard, 307 Magnolia, mine is very short. Rite Aid has two driveways, one to enter, one to exit.
Yes, on, on, on Fourth Avenue.
On Fourth Avenue.
Yes.
Unfortunately, as soon as the sun goes down and early in the morning, drivers who come to do business, and when I'm talking early in the morning, it's between 7:00 and 7:30 when I'm out with my dog, they ignore those signs and one of these days, somebody is going to be hurt. And I've already spoken from before the management or...
You spoke to Rite Aid?
You're talking about Rite Aid. They should put a couple of speed bumps in that maybe would be a discouragement. It doesn't, it seems to be falling on dead ears. I would like to suggest that when the planning board deals with the changes of new ownership and so on...
Yes.
That that be seriously considered because I know animals that have been struck.
Scott, you attend the planning board meetings. Would you make sure that when something comes up with Rite Aid, that this is addressed there? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Picard.
And the other thing is the snow plowing. I, somebody brought it up. At my, at Third and Magnolia, the residents that own the property had really shoveled out the crosswalk, both across Third Avenue and across Magnolia. And then the snowplow came back, not once, but at least twice. And on both sides, it was only, yesterday afternoon, I noticed, the one side is finally thawed out and the water's running. You have all these juveniles that didn't have school for two days. That's my...
Thank you, Mrs. Picard.
My name's Alan Sabo, 1611 Central Avenue. Going to be really short. I just really wanted to say thank you. I was in touch with Officer Gary a lot, I can't pronounce his last name too well, so...
Pannacella.
last name too well, so I'm going to try.
Pannichella.
Yeah, Pannichella. He's a really, really nice guy. He really, and with Chief Risco and with the staff, when it came to the funeral, they really helped us out a lot, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. As a community member, as the mayor knows, I'm pretty close with the family. It's been very hard on us as a community, and we appreciate you giving us a time to let us talk, and we just hope that, as the rabbi says, we'll get some water out of this. Thank you.
Jake Line, 256 Southeast. It's Avenue Highland Park. I've been living here twelve years, and first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the council and also the police department, because this is a very safe neighborhood. This is a great place to raise a family. I had my first child here, and it's really, it really is a place where you could walk the streets of Highland Park and feel like it's safe and feel as a pedestrian that you can get to places and get their safety and get home. And that's not, that's something we overlook and think that that's just a given, but it's not a given. And that's because of the great work that you do and the great work the police department does, and we really do feel safe here, and that's thanks to all the hard work that you do. I just want to talk about one point, which is, which is about enforcement and safety. And I've been walking to the synagogue and the schools for twelve years, so I can testify to the experience. And I think in once, and many, many issues were raised about, about, you know, the, that road, Route 27. And I think, for me, what I've seen over the years, and you, Mayor, you're going to be able to experience this. If you, when you go with Mr. Schiffman and stand by Route 27, take a few minutes. Don't cross the street right away, and just let some cars go by and see how many stop. Because over twelve years that I've been there, not many have. This is twelve years of anecdotal, you know, evidence of me standing there with my children and literally barricading them until I, until I see that there are no cars on the road, because the cars do not stop. The amount of revenue the township could generate just by standing with, with full police uniform and seeing, you know, just car after car while, while you are standing there as a pedestrian in a crosswalk with a nice big yellow sign, you would be standard into how much revenue. And, and, you know, this is not about money. We're not, nobody's here because of dollars and cents. We're here because we want to protect our children.
Right.
And there's a lot of children that go to school there, that pray there, as has been said before. And I think if there's, I want to talk to enforcement, because I think between now and then, it's going to take time. Even, even as the rabbi said, if, if you keep us, you know, weekly updates and we're fully engaged and fully involved, which I truly believe, Mayor, you're going to, you're going to make sure that that happens, it's going to take time. I worked for government. I know how government is. There was mention of six. That's six layers that we know about. There's another sixteen you don't know about of layers you're going to have to go through within different departments, Department of Transportation, the state. There's a lot of different things. Even when there's full commitment and full strength in, in, in this goal of getting safety to that area, it's going to, it's going to take time, and there are going to be many steps. So, the question is, for me, is what do we do between now and then? Because God forbid, we're standing here between now and that time, and we're talking about another, another casualty. So, I think, I think it speaks to enforcement. I think it speaks to, to the police department and possibly other resources, like we do in, in the other public schools that we do in the morning, when they come from school and, they come and go from school. So, you see the enforcement, you see the police department out there, you see crossing guards out there, and they really make a big difference. They really do. They, you know, they, they do a tremendous job of making sure, and I know, of making sure that those children are safe. And I would like to see the same thing between now and then for my children. And I'd like to see that, that the community, whether it's Highland Park, Edison, or the greater Millinsex County community, sees that if you, if there's, if there's a child or an adult standing by that crosswalk and you don't stop, there's a good chance you're going to get a ticket. You're going to get stopped. You're going to end up here in this court, sitting at a judge where you're sitting, and trying to explain to yourself, why is it that you, that there was a plain, either plainclothes or, or fully, a judge's uniform police officer standing there, and you just drove by?
Yeah.
I think you really, I think when you go, take your time. Just stand there, you know, bring your brightest clothes, you know, give the, the, the outgoing traffic the most notice that you are there and that Mr. Schiffman's there, and you're going to see yourself that even, even if we reduce the, the traffic, that's one aspect of it, reduce the speed. But the other aspect is enforcement and a show of strength, that, that if you are, you are there, you better watch out, because the police will stop you, and they are making a big push for enforcement on stopping for pedestrians.
I think that's a very good point, and I think that, pardon?
Well, actually, um-
Chief Risco's gone to speak to that.
I think that's an excellent idea, as, as, along with all the other suggestions. We certainly have no qualm about making that area safer. We look forward to doing that. But speaking on a pedestrian crosswalk, we have actually received grant money, and we do conduct periodic, I wouldn't say frequent, it depends on personnel and available funds, but we have conducted cross, pedestrian crosswalk details with plainclothes officers and other cars in the area frequently. It's not very popular with the people we stop, but it never is. As far as enforcement, I think our reputation in Highland Park is pretty well-known for enforcement, and we'll continue to vigorously enforce all the traffic laws, including the crosswalks. But that is part of our normal details when we're able to do that. But thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to get back to the regular scheduled, if I could find it, agenda, and then there is another option for a public discussion later on. So, I'm hoping some of you will stay, but if you have to leave and don't want to be bored by our everyday business, though I don't find it boring, please feel free to leave. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, council reports. Councilman Walsh, would you start us off, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Senior Center is working to actively recruit a driver with a commercial driver's license to take seniors on regularly scheduled trips and outings. If there are people interested who have a commercial driver's license, it is a part-time obligation, but something that would be greatly appreciated by the borough, you can email me, jimwalshhp@gmail.com, and I'd be more than happy to connect you with the appropriate people for applying for that position. I would also like to invite people to come to the monthly senior lunches. This month is going to be next Tuesday, February 9th, at noon, to, and all the seniors are welcome to come and enjoy lunch, and I'll try to make them as often as I can, and I hope that all of you can join us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to just note that the Parking Study Task Force that had been discussed to be formed is in the process now. We have gotten some of the citizen volunteers and some of the board members from the independent agencies, and I hope to be able to present that to you on the next agenda for appointment, for your appointment.
Great.
I'm also gathering a relatively simple bibliography, so that we actually concentrate on what's professional and contemporary and not just talk about large four-wheeled vehicles that stop on the side of the road in stripes. That's not what this is about, and it's not what's going to happen. With regard to Main Street Highland Park, they're very actively planning the street fair. That is a huge amount of lead time, but the general indication is that it's going to be the biggest ever. The 5K is also being planned in conjunction with that, and that looks like it's going to be the biggest ever. Very enthusiastic about that.
And what is the date for that street fair?
I can't give it to you. I won't guess, Mayor.
I think it's May 1st.
I, I thought it was either the last day of April or the first day of May. But Main Street has also been concentrating on its organization lately. Paul Inaros, the new president, working with the old board, the new board, got out their policy manual, Policies and Procedures manual, and updated it, and I got a copy of it over the weekend-
Good.
...by email. And also, they've met and discussed their 2016 goals and aspirations and their, quote, wish list and the things that they want to accomplish, one of which is to expand the Main Street project right out to the limits of the bid and even review the bid itself. With regard to the Highland Park Redevelopment Agency, it was a bit of a quiet month during January. There are, but they voted in and referred to us some site-specific amendments to the redevelopment plan for one of the small developments that's actually moved into the planning stage at, just off the corner of North, North Second and Raritan. They are all, when I say site-specific amendments, they're not change, we're not changing the whole zoning plan of the whole town. It is some amendments to work with the developer of one specific project, so it's called site-specific. It's only for that site, which is permitted under the redevelopment law. So, that's in process. They're also discussing with the developer, which we've been discussing the, the site along the north side of Raritan, down from South Second, called the, they like to call it the gun shop site. There are some discussion of, a need for some professionals, but at some prompting, they have explored with the developer that the developer's escrow picks up the cost at no cost to the borough. In relation to that site also, there are some, an estimate is being circulated with regard to some environmental investigation. And the planning board will be considering, to go to the other end of the redevelopments amendment of, of the redevelopment plan, the planning board will be considering that plan, hopefully at the agenda on February 11th, which brings me to the planning board. February 11th is the Continued Hearing of American Properties. That's the development off Cleveland. That's adjacent to Pulte and then continues down Cleveland at the old Honeywell Site. I hope that they are able to also squeeze in on the agenda, the amendment to the redevelopment plan, so that project can move forward and we can actually see shovel in the ground this year. If not, we'll be able to accommodate it and still make, make some progress on that. But it is very, very important that everybody, as I say all the time, come to the planning board, the zoning board, the redevelopment agency, Main Street Highland Park, to see the nuts and bolts of this being constructed. I'm anticipating that the American Properties application will be before the planning board for several more meetings as well. But we are beginning to get into the specifics of traffic management, site engineering, so that I think it's very important that everyone turn out. Finally, last but not least, the zoning board has a number of applications, and again, it's very, very important, I think, for everybody to turn out, just to see what happens, how it works, and what's going on in town. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Erickson?
Briefly, as everyone in the council knows, and many in the audience would know, Highland Park, working with the Blaustein School, prepared a capital improvement plan. And the next step is to work with the school district to coordinate our work with theirs. The mayor's gone ahead and contacted the school district, and hopefully we'll set up some initial meetings in the near future.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Okay, just a few things. On next Friday, the 11th, our police department will be having a cultural diversity training for all members of the staff and borough. Staff are invited as well. And last week, the mayor and I attended a terrorism and security awareness function in Trenton, and we have a lot of pullouts that we have gotten, a lot of useful information that we have gotten from that meeting, and we will be sharing about when to report, when not to report, information about various threat levels. So, keep posted. We'll be sending information out via NICSOL, newsletter, just the general information, just to keep us all safe. So, we will be keeping you in the loop on those safety issues. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Fine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While in New Jersey, we have had an assault weapons ban since 1990, the Health and Human Services Committee, that I chair, believes that there is still more legislative work to be done to address the issue of gun control in our state. Recently, in District of Columbia versus Heller, the United States Supreme Court recognized that the constitutional protections related to firearm ownership are not unlimited and do not extend to all types of firearms. Recent incidents in Aurora, Colorado, Newtown, Connecticut, Charleston, South Carolina, Roseburg, Oregon, and San Bernardino, California, have demonstrated that gun violence is not limited to urban settings, but is also a reality in many suburban and small-town locations. Unfortunately, the state of New Jersey does not currently prohibit the transfer of possession of 50-caliber firearms. 50-caliber rifles are military-grade firearms capable of penetrating the highest grade of body armor and inflicting tremendous damage upon its target, are considered among the most destructive weapons legally available to civilians in the United States, and are a weapon of choice for terrorists, gang members, drug traffickers, and other criminals. In 2015, the Highland Park Board of Health, to which I am this council's liaison, passed a resolution stating that such weapons pose an undue threat to the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens and law enforcement personnel of Highland Park. The last time a bill was introduced to ban 50-caliber firearms in the state of New Jersey Legislature was in 2013, but it was not enacted. I urged my fellow council members to adopt the resolution by the Health and Human Services Committee, which is on our agenda for consideration tonight, that will urge our state lawmakers to reintroduce and enact legislation banning the transfer and possession of all 50-caliber firearms in New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fine. Council President Wilkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Thank you, Councilman George, for mentioning the street fair on May 1. Just a few weeks before that, save the date for Earth Day, Sunday, April 17. Also, just a quick note on the upcoming holiday schedule, which has caused garbage and recycling pickup to be rescheduled from Friday, February 12, and Monday, February 15. Those are holidays. If your garbage or recycling pickup falls on any holiday, it will be rescheduled to the Wednesday of that week. So, we've tried to standardize the weekly schedule, so no matter what week it is, Wednesday is the alternate day. But still, please refer to the usual notices via our website, our non-emergency alerts, and also social media. And lastly, I have a little bit of a report here about our new friend, Jonas. Beginning last Friday, at the start of mega-snowstorm Jonas, our Highland Park, you didn't know what I was saying, did you? Okay. Our Highland Park Department of Public Works salt trucks were out overnight spreading salt to minimize icing. Again, that was starting last Friday night. By 6:00 AM Saturday morning, all nine trucks were in full snow removal operation. With more than 36 miles of roadway to clear, the crew halted all other operations on Monday to dedicate yet another day to additional snow removal. The crew worked 34 hours straight through, a full day longer than our neighboring towns. Additionally, by 6:00 AM on Saturday morning, our property crew were out on foot clearing snow, spreading salt on municipal properties, and keeping conditions safe for residents. While many businesses and our schools were closed on Monday and with late starts on Tuesday morning, our crews were on the scene. Working in tandem with the New Jersey Department of Transportation and the New Brunswick Department of Public Works, the Albany Street Bridge was cleared for foot traffic on Tuesday, and we hope that with our new arrangements with these entities, we can clear the path even sooner than that in the future. The crew worked throughout the night during a wind-driven blizzard with limited visibility, a snowfall rate at times of three inches an hour, one of the worst snowstorms in New Jersey history, snowfall during a, of, snowfall during a 24-hour period. The conditions were- were so severe that our massive trucks were getting caught in the snow and ice. DPW, we've let them take the night off tonight, but the team had some comments, and I'd like to share them. Our foreman Frank Troy says, "With the severity of the storm, when the trucks were getting stuck on ice and sliding into snowdrifts, and as we were getting stuck, residents were offering and assisting in getting us out, removing the snow from around the tires and helping us get some traction. Some offered hot coffee and snacks while we waited for another truck. I'm very appreciative." That's great. That's great news, and I really would, we, I think everybody here, the mayor included, would really like to thank all of our residents for all of your cooperation, for your help, for your patience in all this. A couple more comments, please. Um, our Head of, of Public Works, Don Risch, says, "This is one of the worst snowstorms I've ever experienced in my life, and I've been with Highland Park Department of Public Works for 40-plus years. I'm proud of the work of our crew and our entire, and our entire fleet is strong and withheld all the elements. I thank the residents for all of their cooperation." Foreman Wyk Wazorkowicz says, "I thank the residents for following the no parking when road is snow-covered rules, especially in the triangle area. This really helps us push the snow further off of the road." Um, I'd like to give a special shout-out to our newest Councilman, Jim Walsh. Excuse me, I stepped away for a minute. Did you mention?
No.
Jim rode shotgun with Foreman Frank Troy during the snowstorm in one of the, in one of the plow vehicles, so thank you for that. I hope you enjoyed yourself.
No, it was a, it was a great experience. It really gave me a really good picture for, uh, the professionalism and hard work that our Public Works team put together in, uh, tackling a snowstorm. And I think it's very easy for us to take for granted, uh, what it takes to clear out those 36 miles of roads, and, um, it really was a tremendous effort, uh, all in all. But yeah, thank you.
And thank you for, for sharing in that experience. Um, that was, thanks for stepping up. Um, also-
I just wish we had pictures of it, Jim.
Well, he's got a few. He do. We do.
You can follow me on, you can go to my Twitter account, and White live tweeted the whole thing.
And we've got them on Facebook as well.
Yes.
So, thank you. Um, special thanks to all of our emergency response personnel, our Police Department, our, um, First Aid Squad, Fire Department, OEM and SER teams, and just a couple of reminders for another, for the next snowstorm. Please do not throw snow back into the roadway once the road has been plowed. Let's all please exercise good citizenship. Once the road's plowed, it's plowed for everybody. We don't want to see people cleaning off their cars in the middle of the road. You're just putting more snow where the plow's been already. We want to encourage as many cars to please stay off of the sides of streets until all the plowing is complete. We've got these massive vehicles, um, trying to plow tons of snow out of the way. It's difficult for them to maneuver. If there's a car parked where it shouldn't be, it's very difficult for them to serpentine in, in these harsh conditions. Uh, pedestrians and skiers, I've seen you guys out there, I used to be one of them, please, though, stay off the roadway while the plow is out. It's, it's very dangerous. And also, a reminder to residents, please, if you have hydrants in front of your properties, other residents or business, please try to clear the area. And I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I've already given my report. Um, all right. Deputy Clerk?
Yes.
Would you report on advertising the Salary Ordinance Amendment for Consideration of Passage on Final Reading by Title?
An ordinance to amend and ord, entitled "An Ordinance to Provide For and Determine the Rate of Compensation of Each Officer and Employee of the Borough of Highland Park" and the method of payment of such compensation was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Clerk, would you report on advertising sanitary sewer ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance concerning sanitary sewer rents and fees and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Deputy Clerk, can you report on advertising the Traffic Ordinance Amendment for Consideration of Passage on Final Type, Title Reading by Title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 7 Traffic, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance of final reading by title?
Motion to adopt, motion to take up ordinance?
Second.
Okay. Um, may I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Clerk, uh, we are going to table the next, um, ordinance, uh, till the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Deputy Clerk, would you please report on the introduction of Building Construction Ordinance Amendment for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title?
An ordinance entitled "An Ordinance to Amend and Supplement the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park," Chapter 135, Building Construction, has been introduced in writing by the council as a whole for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Borough Attorney?
Madam Mayor, I just, I thought we should put on the record that for the ordinances that were adopted this evening, if there's any member of the public that would like to comment on those ordinances, you're certainly welcome to do so.
Thank you.
Hearing done, I think the ordinance is standing up.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, the consent agenda. Uh, may I have a motion to adopt the following items? Resolution to approve the bills list, resolution to approve the bingo license, resolution to amend the annual salary resolution, and resolution urging the state of New Jersey to prohibit the sale or transfer of any 50-caliber firearm or 50-caliber cartridge.
So moved. Second.
Is that a roll call? Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd like to say one thing about, in particular, about the firearms, which I'm in favor of. I want to congratulate Governor Christie on his abysmal showing in Iowa. Maybe you'll get his fat ass back to New Jersey and work on, no, Mayor, I'm sorry. The last time he came back to New Jersey was to veto the smoking bill. The time before that, that, that governor, who hasn't been here for nine months, came back to New Jersey was to veto the firearms amendments that the legislature had put up. I am in favor of it. I told this Councilman Fine, I wanted it to go farther. I admire his sponsoring of this, and I vote yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I am appointing the following. Judy Shand Monk as a full member of the Planning Board. She had been an alternate, and Rebecca Hand as an alternate to the Planning Board. Any public discussion?
Yes, please come forward and give us your name and your address. Michael Gordon, resident 207 South Fifth Avenue. First, I want to commend the Police Department, incredible work they did during the snowstorm. We had a family that was stranded at our house. Uh, the cab company hung up on us when we asked for help, and the police officer was nice enough to take the family home with a shovel we provided, dug them out a little bit so they get into their house. So, I want to thank you for that. Talking about the public safety, when you take the walk through town, um, everything's local. I live on South Fifth. I walk to Raritan every Saturday, and the amount of cars that I have to dodge that think the stop sign's a suggestion is incredible. Uh, my kids know now, they've grown up here, we've here 21 years, you never cross the street, till you watch. Um, and I was hoping the Police Department, and I know the enforcement is great here, is to bring up the level of enforcement for stop sign, stoppage. Cars, as Mrs. Bigheart said, just right in the parking lot, it just goes right through. Shop, right, stop in shops, parking lot, they come right out. There's not even a slow down. So, when you walk, please be aware of that, and I'm asking to have enforcement of that as well on all the streets. Thank you very much, and commend the council for taking up the safety issue tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief, would you, um, bring that up with Councilwoman Foster Dublin at your next public safety meeting, uh, to address the stop sign issue? Thank you. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. This meeting is adjourned.